February the 12th, 2021 at three o'clock PM. And it says on my, on my little agenda sheet, Birmingham City Hall. But of course, we are being hosted at Birmingham City Hall, but most of us are spread out from our understanding all over the state. So very good. We're going to call together. This meeting is now called to order. At this time, let's see. Approval of the minutes, which I understand we don't have. So we're gonna kind of forego those for this particular time and come back at another time. And now we're gonna open it up for an update from the Port Authority. So at this time, we're gonna open it up to the President and the Chair for, to get it started. So let's get it rolling. Who's gonna carry it from your end?
Work for a fire, the National Gas Company here in Alabama. And I'm President of the Board. I'd like to introduce the other members that are with us. Of course, we, we know Ms. Ward recently retired from the federal government. Federal or state?
Federal.
Tell me.
The federal.
The federal government branch. And then Mr. Chad Pilcher, he's a local attorney. And Mr. Maharit McTeer is also with us. And I'd also like to introduce one of the most prized assets we have on our team is David Russell. He's our Executive Director, been with us about a year. And he makes the dream work. And that's where we are. So I just want to make a couple of comments to begin with. And I'm gonna turn it over to David to jump into some of the details. But you know, we're a new group. We've got four out of five new board members. Of course, we've added David. We've done a lot of things financially to get solid so that we could be in a position to accept a grant, which David will talk about in a minute, and those plans that we have. So just as a whole, I like our, our group. We're focused on making this a development, economic development asset so that we can get some people some jobs and make it a better place for Birmingham. It's kind of scary. You know, I don't have any port authority, port business background. So I don't have a lot of real estate background, but I like the people I'm around because we all pitch in and we all dialogue and agree and disagree. And ultimately, we're on the same page when decisions are made. So I'll leave it with that. And then I'll turn it over to David since he's the one who prepared some, some good information for us and got it all on one page. I don't know if you have it in front of you, but I'm sure he'll send it to you because it's a good reference. So David, can I turn it over to you? And.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And can everyone hear me okay? Okay, great. And as for the update on the port, as Mr. Chair said, the authority won the DECA grant, was awarded in the DECA grant back in February of 2020. And this was right before COVID hit. Our initial partner was one of the terminals at the port, Lynn Port Terminal. And once COVID hit, one of their partners had some issues, some complications. And it put a stall in our business. So since then, we revamped since September, getting everything back on track. We've now switched our grant focus to working another port terminal. Waco is who we worked with before. Waco is a billion dollar company. Those are great partners to have in this industry. They're specialized in short term rail. They own ports all across the United States. So this is a good partner to kind of help have direction with. And one of the Port Authority's biggest issues is not having the asset. Port Authority, like the Decatur, Morgan County Port Authority, they was deeded over land once they was created. So we're kind of backing into these type of things. So we're trying to purchase land so we can operate on our own. The long term play for us is to be self sustainable. But as of right now, building this warehouse would be our first piece of asset, generating some revenue and continue to push economic development for the city and the county from the Port Authority standpoint.
Have any questions? Did my sound go out?
No, I can hear you.
David, can you, okay, so can you hear me, David?
Yes, I hear you now.
No. You were right on target. Okay, let me ask first of all, okay, Dave, you're through with the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I know you were finished. Okay, at this point, let me ask, Darryl, do you have any questions you would like to ask?
Yes, sir. So I just leveled with you guys. So the Birmingham City Council recently approved, you know, our funding commitment to the Birmingham Port Authority. And you know, that reminded me that we haven't had an update from you guys recently. So I appreciate you all taking the time to check in with us and provide an update. But in that regard, you know, I'd, I'd ask, you know, for some metrics, like, you know, what are, what are we doing in terms of tonnage of volume into the port? And do you have, you know, any data that you can share with us on that? And, you know, projections or, or things of that nature that can share with us? I mean, where, where have we been? Where are we now? Where are things going in the future? And what do we hope to accomplish?
I think that's a fair, fair question. And I'd also throw in, we probably ought to benchmark a number of jobs that are out there. Ultimately, we want to get more jobs. More tonnage might, might lead to more jobs. So yeah, we'll work on that.
Sure.
As for the current amount of tonnage, a lot of the terminal operators are privately owned. So authority really doesn't have a hand in that. But we're trying to work with Waco to increase that tonnage by providing them with a new warehouse. They will be able to market to new individuals such as for PIG. As you know, the Fairfield Works is about to come back online. And once they come online, it'll allow more tons to come through the port that they had housed a different type of metal. It needs to be stored inside. And currently, they can't house, but they don't have a warehouse to do with. So this proposed grant that we were about to build, this proposed warehouse we're about to build the grant fund, is about 20,000 square foot or 30,000 square foot. Depending on Waco's needs, we're going to develop that warehouse for them to help increase that port activity. Then hopefully, this will serve as a model to the other terminal operators so we can continue to duplicate the same product and create more economic development. For instance, Parker Towan is a huge land owner out of the port. If I'm not mistaken, they own about 320 acres. They probably only use about no more than 15. So showing someone like Parker Towan that this is a model that can be used to help their business, help bring more jobs and economic growth to the city and the county, I think will be a win-win for both parties.
I would also add that there's, you know, the long run is taking advantage of the rail that connects the port to the Inslay Works. You know, it's a brownfield site. And if we could ever attract an industry there that could take, that would need a port, that wanted to be in Birmingham for workforce and interstate infrastructure, they could put incoming material or end product on that rail, get it to the port and get it to the Gulf and wherever it needed to be, or even upstream towards the Mississippi Valley area. So we like that opportunity in the long term. Right now, we're just focused on getting this building built, saying that we've, you know, got the proverbial first down, as we like to say. Because, you know, quite frankly, when we get through with this building next March, we'll just be about, just about be out of money. We appreciate the money the city's giving us, but we hope that with this new building, that we could earn some trust to get back to our previous funding levels. We'll exhaust all our capital reserves and our emergency funds to pay our portion of the, of the grant. And we hope that would also encourage the county to resume their contributions to us so that we can keep having some capital to expand and, you know, build other buildings, make other infrastructure improvements. So that's also the long term financial.
So David, did you want to go over your executive summary, the attached documents that you had? Because I think that provides a lot of detail. And I'm not sure how much detail they wanted, but I know those documents are very good.
Okay. I'm gonna start with the, the growing of our market share. Currently, for the whole entire state, Birmingham Port probably serves around 12% of the overall state production when it comes to inland port works. Because we have other Port Authorities like Madison, Decatur, Morgan Port Authority up in Honsville. All you got is the Port Authority down in Tuscaloosa. Then you have a huge player, someone like the State Docks. To create that synergy, first of all, authority can help the five terminal operators work more, work together and create more synergy to kind of help them have a one globalized vision. Right now, everyone's committed to doing their own thing. They're all privately owned. But with authority, we all can bring them together and kind of help support the State Docks. Because as you know, the State Docks received, I'll say, $270 million from the federal government to deepen their port. So once that extra freight and cargo start coming in, a lot of stuff can be shipped up to Birmingham. And with the authority involved, we can kind of help distribute that work amongst all our terminal operators. And as you know, we have access to rail. So we have three Class One rails continuing to the port. So the interstate works site is very, very vital to authority in the long term play because if authority can get that piece of land, we can definitely redevelop it and turn it into a logistics hub. With three Class One rail and BNSSF being a major player, BNSSF is a rail operator that serves pretty much the entire West Coast. And Birmingham is the first east of their town. So if BNSSF was willing to come to authority and look at the end development and kind of help set up a distribution hub, Birmingham can come to a center of logistics for the whole East Coast of the country. Because BNSSF brings stuff in from China, they could bring it to Birmingham and we can ship it out to the whole East Coast. Another thing we have, we're connected to the airport by rail as well. So the airport is growing in their air cargo shipping. So when they bring stuff in from around the country, they're offering live support. And we make that conjunction with the State Docks. So the State Docks can bring things in, bring it up to Birmingham and ship from Birmingham to the airport and move internationally as well. So it's so many opportunities and so many scenarios we create around the Port Authority because of the, how strategically it is placed. There's not that you mentioned the, the infrastructure with the highway. We're 20 minutes away, 25 minutes away from the interstate. So to move trucks around wouldn't be hard as well.
Fantastic. Excellent, excellent. That was very good information. I know, Dr. Quinn, you, you were full of questions. So get them out. Anything else you want to add, Dr. Quinn?
I think I'm gonna give Counselor Woods an opportunity to ask questions. And but thank you for mentioning those executive summaries. I think that Tevin did forward that to us. So I haven't had an opportunity to look at it yet, but I'll definitely do that.
Very good. I didn't know that Quinn was in to be there. Counsel, I mean, Counselor Woods, you, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to see overall, just if there's a feel for overall investment needed to kind of get to some of the levels and accomplishments and possibilities. If there's a, you know, maybe a rough dollar value of kind of what, what money, what projects would need to take place in order to get to that point?
David, did you hear him? Were you able to hear him?
Barely. Can you, I could hear you a lot clearer.
Okay, his question was what type of funds that you all need to get you to the point where you wanted to go? I think that was a sort of what he said. And my Counselor Woods, if he, he couldn't hear you, but I wanted to make sure we pre, we paraphrase that so he could understand. Counselor Woods, you want to repeat that again so he could hear you because he couldn't hear you? Counselor must have his, I think he's moved.
I was answering a question, Counselor. Yeah. Yeah.
Counselor Woods, are you there?
Maybe there should be something on this.
David, I think Counselor, Counselor Hilliard recapped Counselor Woods' question pretty clearly.
Okay, to answer your question, we would like to definitely be able to have funds for operating costs and be able to put some money in capital reserves and narrow monthly reserves and capital improvements. So if a project came along, then we would really have to come to the city every time we need some funds. We've been good stewards of the funds that we've been given thus far. For starters, I think we'll get back to the level of funding of half a million. $500,000 will definitely put us back in this place where we can really sit down and come up with other plans and still focus and continue the development that we're doing now.
Absolutely. Counselor Woods, did that, did that answer your question? Are you able to hear us? Well, I don't think, go ahead, go right ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, so I was trying to, I guess, I kept going in and out, moving around. But the overall, getting a feel for, you know, what amount of investment is needed in order for the port to be able to be kind of accomplish some of the things that are possible, you know, with, with those expanded, basically traffic through and, you know, kind of becoming potentially, you know, maximizing the potential that's out there. Like what other types of investments? I know y'all are currently getting ready to build, you know, one structure out there. But just overall, what's needed? And do you have an idea of the dollar value that goes with that?
Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Swenson, you're muted.
If we kind of put, no, thank you. If we kind of put the, you know, look at it as a, a home project list, things that we needed to do and get it, get around to. I know that there's, you know, some sea walls need to be improved. I'm sure there's some crane work that needs to be refurbished. But I don't, I don't know that I have a list yet. David made a project and all the properties that we would need and what the cost would be with that.
I want to respond to this as Board Member McTeer. Mr. President, did you finish your statement?
Yes, I did, thank you.
You know, I, I think Counselor Woods is searching for an idea of what, what funding these projects look like. For example, and am I right, David? Like when Decatur's port was, was, was started at inception, I think David said this earlier, 90 acres of land was donated to the port for projects. So for us, we don't own anything. So the value of the port, first and foremost, would be getting some type of ownership of some type of land to bring projects to the land that we own to generate revenue. Parker Towan, for example, as David shared with you, they've got 300 and no, 350 acres, David, 350? Am I correct? I think they've got 350 acres on the port and they're only using 12 acres. So land acquisition is big. So when we're talking 100, 125,000, 500,000, we're only talking operating money for real. And it's almost like, when I look at ports across the country, ports across the country work in a collaborative relationship with government. So for us to articulate, like, all of the projects right now would be extremely difficult to give you a number. But I think what's most valuable, even in this session, is to establish a relationship of some type of collaboration where our Executive Director and, and, you know, folks on our team need to be out here looking for deals, looking for opportunities that are, that are going to generate revenue for the city. So we would like to be able to, in conjunction with hard operating cost dollars, which is not rocket science to figure out. We've kind of got our hand around what it takes to make us do what we do. But to do a project, and a lot of projects across the country are funded through bond issuance. That's my background in public finance. These deals are done through private-public partnerships, you know, all kind of creative structures to pull these deals together. So us talking about, you know, 100, 250, 225, I mean, great conversation. But for us to move the ball and move dirt and have real projects on the port and, you know, I don't know how broad of a scope of understanding you guys have of the power of a port. The port's power is enormous. And I think when the Birmingham Port was established, I think the vision of the city was that this could be an arm of the city that can do things that no other authority and no other board could do because we've got access to all type of federal grants, all type of, you know, funding, everything you can imagine, we've got access to that nobody else has access to, to pull some of these creative finance deals together. So from an economic development committee standpoint, looking at the port as, let me get an understanding of the power of the port and the resources that the port can bring for economic development projects for the city. So it's almost like, do we need to go identify opportunities, Councilman Woods, and package them up and come back to you all and say, this is an incredible opportunity that will bring in potential XYZ and revenue to the city to pull this off? This is how we would need to do it. This is how we would have to creatively structure the transaction. And this is what we think we could do with this particular deal or project. That's where my mind is in this conversation with you all at the city. And I think we are a tool that needs to work hand in hand with you guys because we are a powerful tool and weapon for you guys to go out and do a lot of creative projects, knowing that we can come to you in this type of relationship on a project by project basis. As we identify them, we do the grunt work. Our Executive Director puts the pack, you know, helps us to package this stuff up. And we sit out and have a conversation about it. But we can definitely give you those hard numbers from a budget standpoint to keep us running, to handle some of the low hanging fruit things that we need to handle, to, you know, do little incremental things. But knowing that we've got matching dollars available from the city is important. For example, there's a DECA project. You know, there's a component of it where we've got to, you know, there's some creative stuff that we gotta either work with a bank, we gotta work with the city of Birmingham, we gotta work with the county for us to be reimbursed on the funds to do the deal. So that was an example of even with a grant, there were creative, I mean, there were additional components to the financing to make the deal work. So Counselor Woods, I don't know if that helped at all, but I wanted to kind of give you an understanding of how ports do deals and how we get deals done. And we've got to have a big picture collaborative connection with you, the city, you know, and the county to make this stuff happen.
Right. And I'm with you 100%, I think, kind of where, what, I guess, kind of what I'm pointing at is understanding where y'all are at kind of early on, getting, getting things built up and off the ground. I think getting the building built out there will, will go a long way. But it's, at the same time, it's an educational piece. You know, we, believe it or not, you know, have city leadership, county leadership that may not even be aware that the port exists. And so we have to educate, you know, what's possible and what it takes to make that possibility reality. And at the same time, kind of having an idea of, you know, if you wanted to look at it like building a roadmap. And so, you know, 2021, 2022, we get this built. You know, having conversations around how much capital investment is needed for the Port Authority to generate enough revenue to be self sufficient? And, you know, just kind of mapping out, you know, what are those goals and road, road milestones we want to put in place to, to build that into something? Because I mean, we're not starting from nothing, but, you know, we just, there hasn't been a lot of investment out there. And there are some needs. So I, I think maybe identifying, you know, what the, you know, what the priority list are as far as the infrastructure piece. And then definitely continuing to identify deals. But I think the DECA money is going to go a long way because getting that building built will then give us something to turn around and point to and say, you know, hey, we can push more funding here because, you know, this guy handled well. And this is, these are some of the other things that can come after this and making it more attractive. But no, I agree, it's got to be collaborative, you know, but we've got to have an educational piece as far as, you know, what's needed next, what's needed now, what's needed in three years and kind of trying to build that piece out.
So Counselor Wood, this is Director Sharon Ward. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at the executive summary, but at the bottom, it does give you goals, like projected stuff that we're trying to accomplish. I think that PowerPoint or the executive summary might help answer some of your questions? Kind of give you a little roadmap of where we're headed in the different years?
Okay, yeah, I have not had a chance to pull that out, but definitely, definitely will. But yeah, I just think we should continue to have these conversations so we can keep these economic development tools on the front burner. Like the port is, you know, at the end of the day, like some real serious untapped potential as it relates to economic development for Birmingham. And so, yeah, I mean, we should probably, you know, I'll, I'll let the chairman kind of get in. But at least three times a year, maybe have this conversation in this committee, maybe, if not four.
Well, first of all, let me thank the, thank the Port Authority itself in providing such an excellent executive summary. And some of us, we'll, we'll probably need to go back over it again because the goals are laid out. And I think that's very important. And listening to, to Mr. Russell and what he said, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you said a good half a million or a million dollars would, would some would put you in, uh, back into the saddle now that your funds have been depleted and you're about to build that warehouse that will provide some economic dollars. But I do think that we do need to look at helping you fulfill your goals as the city starts to come back after this pandemic has been, in the way the pandemic has been moving. I think the more we, we communicate and we understand, and of course, and David, as you make your rounds to each one of the council people individually, and, and sort of go over your goal sets. I've been in several meetings today via Zoom where actually that just, that's what happened. A lot of these organization groups go over the summary with us. And, and then when we come together as a collective group like this, we're already educated and, and, you know, and we know what's happening and exactly what the executive summary have to say. So in knowing that, in knowing what we have ahead of us, I really appreciate the communication. Counselor Quinn, is there any thing else you want to add to it?
Yeah, just one, one question, you know, Mr. McTeer talked about collaboration. And Mr. Swenson had mentioned earlier that the, the County Commission, you know, they, they previously have been financially contributing to Birmingham Port. Am I to understand that they have ended that relationship or what's going on with that?
You're on mute.
You're muted, Mr. Swenson.
Oh, okay. They have put those contributions on hold and, and there was some previous activity out there with the prior Executive Director firm that didn't work out very well. And I think the county wants to just say, all right, as using that phrase, show me the first down and we'll get re-engaged. You know, they've been more than willing to help in some other areas. They're going to try to help us, give us the working capital to build the construction, to build the warehouse so that we can pay the contractor because the amount comes on the back end from the, from the DECA. So, so they're not cut off, but they're, they just, they want us to earn some strikes before they get back in the game.
No, thank you.
Very. And to note that, I think we're headed in the right direction. I think David maybe touched back bases with each one of us and, and kind of keep us abreast of what's going on. Any way I can, I believe in the port. I know that the, the port is important to. I know that, uh, the port is important to our region and, and definitely to the district and what it, what type of opportunities it could provide. I believe that we have probably, uh, one of the most intelligent and, and smartest boards that, that are, uh, in the city. So I feel good with the board members that we do have and your backgrounds and we're very fortunate to have you, uh, to be in on this board. So with that said, David, if you, uh, you, uh, uh, Mr. Swenson, if Swenson, if you have anything else you want to add, uh, we can wrap it up.
I'll just say, I'm, I'm, I'm a big fan of, uh, David Russell. He has done some great work for us. Um, I just, um, he, he, he's my hero. That's all I'm going to say.
I got to think that the county and the city have appointed some great board members. Uh, four out of five new members, we definitely had a new direction. And, um, with you all's insight and foresight, uh, it's really helpful to have some board members that respond and kind of are very engaged. The port authorities do have a rare, does have a rare opportunity right now. That's to purchase some land at the authority. I would definitely send those numbers over, uh, for sale price from, uh, one of terminal operators. And if we could get our first asset, that's why we're pushing so hard for this warehouse. This, uh, we could get this forty-three acres available, uh, turn that into a foreign trade zone, the opportunity for abundant warehouse, the customers are going to come at that point. So it's kind of like the Jefferson County Economic Development Committee. Uh, for a while, they just had, they just sitting there, but once they got their asset, they started doing a lot of development around the county. And another thing about the authority, we, our enabling footprint is the whole entire county. So we're not just tied to the port itself, the waterway. Of course, we want to do development there, but if the city owned land, where it could transfer to the authority, we can kind of help develop that, start creating a stream of revenue and then support ourselves. Then we could go back and entertain the authority, we'll, uh, accept that as well.
Well, David, let me say this to you, you know, uh, start, start cranking your wheel up and, and, and exactly what you just said to us, we need to make sure every councilman hears that and commissioner that hears that so that we can push it. And when we push things with a sense of urgency, then we, we get, more things begin to happen. So now is a great time to start, uh, pushing that agenda and making sure that, uh, that your goals and, and, and your, your economic cost is set out and it rings in our heads. So I appreciate you all bringing this to us. Uh, let's, let's start ringing the bell. And I do believe that, uh, uh, that we can get what we need to, uh, make the port viable. If anyone else, I'll open it up at this. Anyone else want to add any closing words? If not, we will, uh, I, I, uh, David, shout to us. Let, let's have a follow-up, uh, with each of my colleagues and let them know how important it is for you to get the funds that you need to continue to push on in the direction you're headed in. With that, I would say thank you.
Can somebody send me the, the executive report? If somebody could forward that.
We'll, we'll make sure you have it.
All right, thanks.
Very good, very good. All right, uh, with that said, uh, um, you know, uh,
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for, uh, for, for coming onto this economic development with the Port Authority. Great to see everyone. May God bless and we'll see you later. Thank you.